Freedom in your.
I thought you done put us there.
Yeah, you was all over it. So we'll put you back.
All right, you want to call this Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for August the 16th of 2021 to order? I'd like to welcome those who are in attendance in our audience here this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV at this time. Our first item on our agenda is our invocation by the Reverend Jim Lee. He's the pastor at Calvary Advent Christian Church, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and that'll be led by Commissioner Robbie Wilkie. So if you would, Pastor, come to the podium.
First of all, I'd like to say it's an honor to be here. Second of all, I want to thank you for your service to our county and to the Lord's work. Let's pray together. Our Father, the scriptures tell us that there is no one like you, and we are realizing in this day and time, Lord, that we have a God that we can turn to in the midst of all the confusion and all the problems that we see not only throughout the world that surrounds us, but right here in Caldwell County. We are grateful, Lord, to live here. We're thankful, Lord, for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for these men and ladies of our county who serve us so well. And we pray, Lord, for wisdom and knowledge for them all the time as they make important decisions that will make our county a better place to live and a better place to operate our businesses, to have playful recreation, just all the good things that we enjoy here in this county. So, Lord, thank you, and thank you for these opportunities that we have just to pray to you. So, Lord, bless this meeting, bless these men as they deliberate, and, Father, we give you all the honor and glory that you rightly deserve, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, proposed amendment is to strike 8F, the Duke Energy Easement from the agenda.
All right, so we'll strike 8F. So what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county clerk has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Would like to add at this point that some may notice Commissioner Jeff Branch is not with us this evening. He's had some surgery, and he is recovering, and everything's going well from that, and so he just asked that we continue to pray for him, and he should be back at our next meeting, hopefully, but just wanted to let folks know where Commissioner Branch is this evening. And then we get to our first item of our adopted agenda, and that's recognition for the Deputy of the Year, as well as our Paramedic of the Year from the American Legion, and Irv Erto is here with us.
Bingo.
I got it right. Thank you, sir.
You put too many vowels in there. People like to add vowels.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Do we want to do these separately, or?
However you'd like to.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll go with what we got listed. First of all, we're really glad to be here today. For the past few years, post 29, American Legion Dyson Kendall Post on Main Street, we've been recognizing County Deputy of the Year, EMT of the Year, and we also do the City Police Chief, Policeman of the Year. And we don't pick the names. The names come from the people in the department, and usually the chiefs push it down a little further and get a little committee going, but it gives them a chance to recognize excellence, but it does not diminish to them the excellence of all of their officers and people in these first responders. They get up and all hours in the night, and they do the things that we can't or don't want to do or are unable to do. So it's a great pleasure for us to acknowledge their contributions to the public safety and to the well-being of the county. And so I guess we'll do the Sheriff's Deputy of the Year, and I believe Alan Jones is going to make the presentation. He's going to be assisted by our post adjutant. No, I'm sorry, he's not his adjutant, he's our post finance officer, Terry Milton, who was recently inducted into the American Legion Baseball Hall of Fame.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And Sheriff Jones is here. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you guys for doing this. American Legion's always been good to law enforcement. I've known both of you for a while, and you do a really great thing for our community. We appreciate that. But the deputy for this year is Sergeant Chan Riddle. Could you come on up? He's been with us about six and a half years. He's also on our SWAT team, Works Patrol, and I can definitely say I have no complaints. He's done a good job even through all the COVID and the sickness we've been in, and we just never stopped, and I want to thank you for the job you've done.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate everything you've done.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Get a little tighter. Don't want to show anybody's knees.
All right, I want to ask you to hold your pose now, because I think you got somebody with you.
Oh.
And if you'd like to make a picture of them, that's okay, too, or if you want to be in the picture with him, then yeah, it's a family affair.
It is.
Just for you, this is going to be like a wedding picture then, right? My phone doesn't take.
Now we'll clap.
Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Mr. and Ms. Riddle.
Pronounce that. EMT of the Year. The EMS service, they take a ballot, I guess, so their nominee was selected by her peers. So Jonathan Cook is going to make the presentation to Lisa Potter. Yeah, you have to come up here and do this, you know, listen to me.
Thank you. You know I do. I will go. I will be moving.
Commissioner Potter's going to join the fray since his wife is there.
I wondered if that was a connection. Okay.
Again, I'd like to say congratulations on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and we do appreciate your service to the county. And for your family members that are here, we appreciate you allowing them to serve in that capacity. We know that it's a hard job, and a lot of times birthdays are missed, anniversaries are missed, and various things, and so we do not take it for granted here, and we just want to echo that and say that we appreciate your service, and congratulations on being chosen by your peers as Deputy of the Year and Paramedic of the Year. And so, and we'll give you an opportunity to say something if you would like to.
Fine, thanks, sir.
All right. Lisa, we'll just leave you, okay? He talks enough for you up here.
I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. I want to, you know, I'm a little partial to the, obviously, the Paramedic of the Year, and I will want to say that I'm extremely, extremely proud of my wife. You know, you talk about people who go back to school, and they always talk about, I'm too old to go back to school, and I'm too old, I'm too old, I'm too old, which she's lived and proved that at about 47 years old, she decided she wanted to become a paramedic, and she did. And I'm extremely proud of her for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both for your service. We appreciate what you do.
And we want to thank the American Legion for coming this evening and being a part of this, and appreciate all that you gentlemen do.
You're welcome.
And have done, and your service to our country.
And we don't want to take that lightly either, so we thank you for everything. All right, next is our items for decision, and that is a preliminary plat approval. Ms. Shelley Stevens is with us this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing this request. And we have the applicant here today, Patrick Warren. This, as you mentioned, is a preliminary subdivision request, and Patrick Warren is the professional engineer who created the plat, and he also is the development manager for Blue Ridge Mountain Club. The property in question is owned by Blackberry Homestead LLC, and the location is off of 321, specifically Blowing Rock Boulevard, and then it's off of Blackberry Road, which is near Watauga County and adjacent Blackberry Road. And it's currently wooded and has no flood plain or watershed. There is a stream on the property. However, they are getting all required permits from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and DEQ for that stream crossing, and it is not a flood plain mapped stream. And the entire subdivision contains 24.59 acres, and 6.8 of those acres, as you can see on this plat here on the screen, are in the Watauga County side, so we won't be approving that. Watauga County will approve that section of the plat. And there are 17 lots in the proposed subdivision and two phases. Phase one is lots one through four, and then phase two contains lots five through 17, all shown there. And the minimum lot size in the subdivision is just over three quarters of an acre, 0.751 acres, and then the max lot size is 6.2 acres. And the zoning is residential agricultural, both on the plat, platted area, and then in the surrounding properties. However, Watauga County does not have zoning, so that area isn't zoned. And the acreage on the Caldwell County side is 17.79 acres, just so you're aware of how much that is there. And as you're aware, the Western Puma Council of Governments has a school growth estimation model that they run with each new subdivision upon request, and I did ask them to run the model for this, and Taylor Dillinger responded in an email that the subdivision most likely will have only seasonal homes or retiree housing, so he believes student impacts on the school system will be minimal. He stated it's anticipated that there would maybe be one additional student at Collettsville, which is a K through eight school, and then one additional student at West Caldwell High, which is grades nine through 12. And public water is unavailable to the subdivision per the definition in the subdivision ordinance. So wells would be used, and then septic systems as well. They have completed a preliminary soil analysis for this acreage, and that does not have any legal value in terms of issuance of improvement permits from environmental health. However, it just shows whether the lots may be tenable for septic systems. And their report does show that each lot should be able to, and there should be able to be a septic system on each lot of some kind, even if it may be an expensive system. But again, this report doesn't guarantee that improvement permits are what would be needed for that. And the applicant has also stated that they want to complete all improvements before final plat approval, so they have the option to do that, or they have the option to bond. So they do want to complete all improvements and certify that all of those were done to the ordinance standards before final plat approval, and they don't plan to gate this subdivision. So that's something that emergency services may think about, but they do not have plans to do that. And of course, the planning board and I both looked at the checklist within the subdivision ordinance of items that are required to be met by the preliminary plat, and Mr. Warren did complete those, and everything is met by this plat. And the planning board does recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Shelley, does the Watauga piece of this back up to, right as you come in the curve there by the sign going into Blowing Rock before you get to Green Park Inn? Is that the Watauga piece right there?
Uh, yes.
Or is it that far up? It may not be that far up.
I mean, Blackberry Road is really close to that.
Yeah.
So yeah, I would assume it would be up there, like, that it would back into that. Patrick might know better.
Patrick, does that Watauga piece back up to, right before you get to Green Park Inn, you know, the?
It's down lower.
It's down lower?
Yeah, that piece below Green Park is the one that Sigley has got for sale, where the condominiums are over, right?
Yep.
Get into town.
Yep. Okay. I know there was some concerns. I heard some concerns out of the Watauga County side about a potential subdivision that was, they had some heartburn over coming up on that right-hand side piece right there, and I just didn't know if this was a piece of that or not.
I don't think so. I haven't heard any complaints, but, and I guess there's a little distance there. It is kind of close, but.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure how far, I guess, would be west that went, so. All right, thank you, Shelley.
Somewhere in your report, Shelley, you said this would impact West Caldwell by a student, but I believe that should read Hybryden. Just want to make that correction, I guess.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Because that would be in the Hybryden district off of Blackberry Road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody have any questions or anything for Ms. Stevens as she has presented a preliminary plat approval?
That may actually be Happy Valley instead of Collettsville.
Yeah, it would be Happy Valley School instead of Collettsville.
Okay.
I didn't catch Collettsville, but I did hear West Caldwell.
Thank you. I know that Taylor looks at the, he does look at the school district maps, but I'll make a note of that for sure. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing nothing else, do I hear a motion that we approve this preliminary plat approval?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat approval as presented to us by our planning director.
All right, any other discussion? I guess this meets the mountain road standard that we have adopted for emergency traffic ingress and egress.
Yes.
I noticed the 45-foot right-of-way, but then some shared 12-foot feeders off of that.
That's exactly right, yes. Shared driveway with no more than three homes is allowed by the mountain road standards and no greater than 15% slope, and they've met those requirements, the mountain road standards requirements. And they also have secured, they don't have to do this until final plat approval, but they've secured a driveway permit as well.
Yes, ma'am. All right. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for investing your money here.
Yes, sir. Next is a proposed American Rescue Plan expenditure, and Chief Dino DiBenardi is with us to highlight some of this this evening and this proposed expenditure.
Good afternoon, or evening, I guess. So of course, American Rescue Plan Act has offered some unique opportunity for our response to and recovery from the current pandemic. A lot of the primary expenditures on the front end of what is nearly $60 million total afforded to Caldwell County will be the public health and public safety component of the challenges that the pandemic has presented. So as was presented at your prior and will be for the next couple, those are our priorities in the beginning, the immediate needs related to the pandemic. One of those needs has been the emergency communications component. The communications component supports key areas that are identified by our department heads and the administration here at Caldwell County, and it meets four of the seven American Rescue Plan Act priorities that we set forth, as well as supporting the key areas of response, vaccination rollout, and public safety. So their quest today is to purchase Viper radios or new radios that do meet the new standard for security, as well as transmission capability on the Viper network, as well as the high band or VHF network, for Health Department, Sheriff's Department, and emergency services. It meets all the key priorities, the recommendations from FEMA and the state, as well as the priorities for us. It's mainly to provide support to healthcare providers and other public safety entities for the purpose of supporting response to mitigation of and recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, and will allow for a coordinated and planned response to future public health emergencies while also, and this is the key, supporting the rollout and delivery of vaccines related to the current COVID-19 pandemic. What we have seen is that they've caused, the pandemic has caused an unprecedented spike in complex responses, so not only are we assisting county entities and county citizens and personnel, but we're supporting the state's rollout and the federal government's rollout of those vaccines. We're also supporting the hospitals, not just one hospital, but multiple hospitals, and then our area counties are obviously inundated with calls as well. So this will help support that, as well as ET3 model, giving us a little bit of flexibility of treating no transport in the field, and then our ability to function in the public safety and byproducts of the pandemic, which has included everything from overdoses, substance abuse, as well as gun violence and many others. So honestly, communications is a key to many things. Anytime you do an after-action report, communications is viewed as one of the failures, so we are trying to prevent that, and this is one of the ways that it'll help our response to and recovery from this pandemic.
All right, so I just got one question, but it might lead to others, but will this surplus any radios? I mean, are we going to be?
Yeah, so current radios will actually have to be phased out by 2025. Purchase would have to be made regardless of the decision of the board tonight on the 23, 24-year fiscal budget. So it will surplus a large number of what is our current XTS radios, the old version Motorola radios. Yes, sir.
Which won't meet the new.
That's correct. 2025, they would be obsolete. Unable to be used on our network. Now, that's not to say in another state that they couldn't, but in North Carolina, it would not be able to be used.
Right.
Now, what will happen to these surplus radios?
They can technically be used as spares. Most of them are not serviceable. I'm not going to, you know, lie to you. Some of them are. They could be surplus through gov deals. They could, you know, the board could choose to transfer those to other departments, to county departments, volunteer departments.
That was my question. Can it's something the volunteer fire departments could use?
Yep, so the functional ones, you would have, Vic, correct me if I'm wrong, you would have about two years, two and a half years functionality if they maintain, you know, they are aging. These radios were bought in 2004, 2005.
Yeah.
The new ones allow you to do the encrypted radios, which HIPAA compliance and things of that nature, as well as secure channels for law enforcement and Health Department on that rollout, but there are some functional radios, so yes, they can be.
Well, and I guess my point is it'd be good if we could get, if somebody could use them for the next two years, it'd be, you know, obviously more than they got now, maybe.
Absolutely.
And that leads me to a question, will you be able to get them in a timely manner?
Actually, surprisingly, we were, we were very surprised to hear the turnaround time on these radios, that if we are to get approved on them, they're looking at a month, month and a half.
Wow, wow.
To three months max on the turnaround time. Some of it was more of the ancillary components of it than it is the radios themselves, so.
That's good.
And that would replace all?
It will not replace all radios, so these are only the compliant, or the, those that meet the standard, and Jeff can probably speak a little more. So there are certain divisions within each of the departments, Health, Emergency Services, and Sheriff's Department that don't meet the standard of the ARPA funds, but it is the vast majority. I mean, we're talking a very miniscule that could be done through general budget and some grant opportunities in the future, but response staff, Health Department staff, absolutely across the board, yes, sir. And with the, you know, the board did approve for the volunteer fire departments that funding. Hopefully, we do that for the next couple of years, and those are eligible expenses for their amount of funds as well, so.
Any enhancements in the comm center?
That's the second phase to this, so although there won't be many of this style of projects brought before the board, one of the next projects, we're just waiting on the engineers, is the improvements to the communication system, which of course is going to benefit countywide. Some of that is internet-based, some of that is radio-based, and some of that is comm center-based, but yes, that should, I would say, Pennals not here tonight, but I think that, we're probably about a month, month and a half away from getting that.
I know we always are kind of a little behind on getting the comm center up to speed, so it'd be great to be able to do this.
Are these just mobiles, or are they?
It's a mixture of both. They have to be for response style, so yes, there is some mobiles integrated into it, but primarily it's portables, and they are, some, most, especially like on the Sheriff's Department side, are dual-band, so they'll be able to function on VHF as well as Viper. Interoperability is the key. So not only are we going to be interoperability with all the counties and departments in the county, but the state and federal government, which was found to be key, especially in the Greensboro rollout of the large vaccination clinic that was there where you're dealing with federal partners, so.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Do I hear a motion we approve this request this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request for the new radios as Chief DiBenardi has explained to us.
Any other comment? I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, so thank you again.
And I would like to say, Jeff, and I know we don't give you, we don't get a chance to see you too often, but before you leave, I want to tell you how much we appreciate your expertise through the last couple, this past 18 months or almost, you know, we've had. I don't know, I'm not sure we could have gotten through it as easy as we have without your expertise, and I want to make sure that you understand how much we appreciate you.
Commissioner, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman and the board, but it's a team effort. We talk routinely. I spent an hour today with Tony and, of course, you know, guys in emergency services, and that's who I report to, and it's a team effort. Now, I'm not going to say there ain't been some stressful days.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they have. And the guidance changes about every, yeah, about every day. And, but no, I appreciate the guidance, like I, you know, I told you, I told y'all when I got hired that our goal is to do it as proficiently and as effectively and as honestly as we can, and that's where I feel that we're at now, so I appreciate it.
Well, you've done a fantastic job, and we appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Our interim county manager, Mr. Tony Hill.
Thank you. On our consent agenda tonight, we have the first item is to approve the minutes from the July 19th, 2021 meeting. We also have a budget revision to roll over prior year purchase orders for $377,000. These are things that were approved in the prior year that just weren't able to be purchased before the year expired. A big chunk of this are some vehicles we ordered, and vehicles are hard to get right now, and so that'll roll those funds over to allow us to continue those purchases we've already obligated. Item C is a budget transfer. This will come from the ARP funds as well. It's $81,612. This will allow us to purchase the UVC sterilizers for the jail. This is those ultraviolet lights that kill the virus, to help fight COVID. Item D, we have another budget revision to roll over prior year purchase orders. We found two more we'd left out of that 377, so it's almost separate, but these are a couple we need to roll over, too. Item E is a budget revision for the Health Department. They received some extra money from coronavirus relief, and it's $231,599. This will allow them to spend that to fight the situation, and thankfully, it does not come from local sources, but comes from the grant. And we moved item F, so that's the end of consent agenda.
All right, so hearing the items for our consent agenda, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting that this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the interim county manager has presented to us.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is appointments, and our county clerk, Mr. Thomas Welch, EDC board and area aging, agency on aging, so.
Hard to say, though.
It is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, there are three appointments to be made to the EDC board and two to be made to the area agency on aging council. You won't need to vote on those because there are that many vacancies. The EDC nominees are Deborah Wilke, Rick Coffey and Max Dyer. The two nominees for area agency council is Tara Swanson and Vince Bartolome. You have those applications in front of you. So I think if you guys want to proceed, you can appoint them all at the same time.
All right, so anybody have any questions? So do I hear a motion that we approve all of these applications as has been presented this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the applications for nominations of the appointment to the EDC board and the council of aging as presented to us by our clerk.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. And we've got a little bit of a unique motion here to end our meeting this evening, just so our press and all those folks that see this understand that we're going to recess our meeting until tomorrow evening, at which time we're going to be going into a closed session and discussing the possible hiring process of our county manager. So we're still in the mode of looking for our county manager. So with that, I'll make a motion to recess this meeting and reconvene it on Tuesday, August 17 at 6:00 p.m. at the location here at our city-county chambers. And upon reconvening in open session, the board will immediately make a motion to enter into a closed session per North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A6. And that is to consider the prospective employment of a county employee. And so with that motion, any other discussion or comment? All in favor of adjourning until tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so we will be back tomorrow evening. So thank you, everyone, for being here. And I appreciate your interest in being a part of your county.